All right, I think we'll call this meeting to order. Everybody will stand. A prayer?
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for our many blessings. We ask that you bless this meeting and the people attending in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing on the agenda is first and second reading of Bill number 536, authorizing the issuance of combined waterworks and sewerage system refunding revenue bond series 2021 in the principal amount of $1,080,000.
Make a motion that we have the first reading of Bill number 536 on Title Only.
Second that.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Okay, Bill number 536. Authorizing the issuance of combined waterworks and sewerage system refunding revenue bond series 2021 in the principal amount of $1,080,000.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
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 Need a motion for the second reading?
Motion for the second reading of the Water and Sewerage System Refunding Revenue Bond Series 2021 by Title Only with approval. Initiation, I guess is what I'm going to say.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Second reading of Bill number 536 authorizing the issuance of combined waterworks and sewerage system refunding revenue bond series 2021 in the principal amount of $1,080,000.
Motion to approve second reading in Act Bill number 536.
Shall we also authorize execution of the bond purchase agreement?
And I will make that part of the motion.
Second.
All in favor? Cheryl?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Helen, you might explain how much we're saving by refinancing this.
Well, actually, I'm gonna let Angela do that.
The finance people do all the fancy net present value terminology, but in hard dollars over 12-year period is about $87,000, but when they factor in the cost of inflation and those sorts of things, it comes in at about $48,000 in savings over 12 years. It's what it's worth today for that 12 years of savings.
That's a good amount to be able to save for the taxpayer money.
Yeah. Definitely. Okay. Thank you. So we've approved the bond agreement, purchase agreement. So we're going to number three, trash contract extension and rate increase. Chris?
Good afternoon, boys. When I spoke with you all back a couple of months ago, you gave me permission for me to sit down with the staff and negotiate a renewal rate. Chris and I discussed and came to a hard fought battle of three and a half percent for your approval.
Okay. Yeah, I read through it and it looks really good, so I appreciate the work you guys did. In addition to the three-year extension, is that?
In addition to the, excuse me, the three-year extension as well.
Yeah, I saw that.
And remind them again, if you will, about the monthly trash pickups you're going to do instead of the twice a year.
So again, as we discussed before with you guys' approval, we'll do a, instead of doing the twice a year spring cleanup, customers can call in for a one-time, excuse me, one-time a month bulk item pickup, so they need a cowl or anything like that, similar to everything they had prior to. If they have just bags out, we consider up to 15 bags of trash, one bulk item, so.
Okay.
And we put together flyers, I've got some additional flyers I'm going to print off and bring down for them as well.
Perfect.
And we've already had people actually calling in and scheduled a few with us, so.
That's great. And Angela, can we get this on our website, what they're actually, the splash page?
Yeah, I have hooked it into the Facebook once already and it's been on the website.
Is the call-in mandatory for the extra pickup?
It's not mandatory, we'll pick it up no matter what, but it just helps us to know about it and keep it, you know.
Right, we'll push it out.
So that way, if somebody, you know, ends up having to hide a bit or something, we can call another driver and have them meet him over here, have a supervisor come over and meet him over here and help him, because sometimes those can be kind of tricky.
Yeah, kinda.
Yep, we've got them stuck on the truck a couple of times because they'll flip open on you, little spring actions.
Oh my gosh, yeah, I bet.
Really?
Well, can I get a motion?
I submit.
Second.
Motion for everybody? Cheryl?
Aye.
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 Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Chris.
Thanks for your extra work on that, too, I appreciate that, so.
Anytime you guys need, just let me know. Chris keeps changing.
Okay, update on sign for Shoalden Park. Chris has been working on this really hard, so I appreciate all of his work on it and
Okay, you guys have seen the three bids we've got, and then Craig sat down with me also. We're, he was willing to give us some ideas on what to do and how to do it. We just got these back in today, and you guys have seen them, seen what they cost. We're going, the city crew is going to build the structure and get the lettered signs. All we needed was the top two signs, and what we've been fighting lately is location to put it in, we're fighting utilities in that area and line of sight and things like that, so that's what we're working on. If anybody else would like to see the signs, be glad to pass them around. You've seen them, so I would entertain a motion to move forward with them and we'll get them going and get the structure up.
Okay, and what are we looking at a timeline for that?
The structure, all the steel's cut for the structure, probably a couple of days, maybe three days of welding, and then we'll have to auger the holes, sand them up, concrete around them, and then we're putting up, putting tads in to put these signs on, and then we would lay false rock around the bottom, fake rock, and pretty the sign up all we could. We decided to leave it pretty basic, the blue and the white, so it stands out and says, here's our park.
Right.
Turn here. What's the size of those? Four by eight. Yeah, and it'd be one on each side, so the problem we're having is trying to stay off state right of way, stay off the waterline, stay off the fiber, stay off the cable, stay off the phone, and still be able to see it. Getting 80 foot off the road doesn't do much good, but we're going to work on it tomorrow. We're going to go up there and still stay within the constraints of our actual 50 by 50, but.
How tall will it be, Chris?
10 foot.
To the top of the sign?
To the top of it, yes. And if we have to move it to where there's a dip down there, we may add two foot to it, rather than haul in dirt, it would be disturbed soil, then wouldn't hold as well, so we may have to add legs to it, but to finish the structure, we'd like to have above grade 10 foot. And then two four by eight below it, one would be the marker, and we can get that from Amazon ourself and save quite a bit of money there. Get that two-sided, so we can put the letters up when they have an event or something like that, so I don't see why we couldn't have it up. Depend, I mean, we're kind of at the mercy of getting these done, it was hard enough to get the bid, but when we can get them done, it probably, we could have them sign up in a week. And then go from there as far as pretty enough with rock and different things, and there is electric in the area, it'd be pretty pricey to get electric to it. I thought we'd look at some solar lighting to see how good that worked, that's why I didn't want it real tall, so we could keep it down, light it easily and have it in line of sight rather than, we have to be 10 feet away from the utilities below them. So that's where we're set. I'd make a motion, we go with the lowest bid, you've got three bids, if you tell me what the lower one is again. Sign man, who, Sign Man does a lot of our signs, does the flags, things like that, 260 per side. 520.
Second that.
Would you like me to list?
Aye.
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 Okay, perfect. And as you know, if you live in the city or even outside of the city, our park is flooded down at Shadow Rock right now, so it is a little bit critical that we get everybody notified where our newer park is, and it's really nice, there is a lot of nice play equipment on it, there's basketball courts, I mean, a ball field, there's so much there, there's bathrooms, so anyway, that's where we're at with it. We're trying to improve it as much so that we have our, everybody in this area has someplace else to go if we don't have Shadow Rock, so. All right, discuss the drinking fountain for Shoalden Park.
The park board met the first of the month, and that was one of the things we brought up, was not having a drinking fountain that people could get a drink easily out of, would be handy, and it could be attached to where the bathrooms are, I think, Chris, is that right? So it's going to be a pretty easy fix, and it'll just be one advanced enhancement to that, and how about?
Yeah, I did get a bid on it, and they don't have them in stock, but you can get a fountain at L&amp;J for $405.29. The only drawback I see is that the bathrooms are located around back, and they're out of sight, out of mind, kind of away from the light, we've had a lot of vandalism on the doors back there. So something we need to look at going forward, we need to look at the security system in that area, which we talked about before.
Right.
And we've had a camera up there, it's just a deer camera, and we've caught a lot of things with just that, so the police department's been great about locking and unlocking the bathroom, patrolling the area, but, you know, you can't be everywhere all the time, so we have had a lot of vandalism up there, so we might look at putting on the front of the building. I know it'd be handier between the two bathrooms in the back, but I just think it would take up a lot of vandalism, so we're going to look and see what, how hard it would be to get a water line to it, and then eventually when we do the pavilion over there, like run a water line, put a drinking fountain over there also, a freestanding one.
Okay.
That's good.
Good. All right. Perfect. Okay, park board discussion.
We have had numerous people on the park board. Nobody jumps out and volunteers to be on it, we usually talk somebody into it. Right now, I think we have one active member.
Well, we have two on the board that are rotating off at the end of this month, and they were both at the meeting. We had actually three there, Nathan, the young man from the high school, can't think of his last name.
Guy.
Nathan Guy, he tendered his resignation because he's going to go to Raleigh, and he thought that was too far to drive. I didn't understand that. Nice, nice guy, just a really nice kid.
The park committee has, park board committee has been assisting us in the path, but again, it's hard to keep somebody on it, and we've got two going off and one moving out of the area. The alderman and the mayor do actually make the decision anyway, so it's my recommendation that we eliminate the park board and the headache that goes with it, trying to find somebody to volunteer to be on it, and just put it back on the alderman and the mayor to say, here's what we're going to do and what we're going to do it, and bring it to the council meeting and say, here's what it's going to cost. Just say this is stat.
And I think that's kind of too why we're seeing some of, you know, what we're addressing here on the agenda as it is, too, so it's just easier to put it before the public versus...
I think decisions can be made much faster.
Yeah.
And in a more smooth transition.
I do think there's other ways that we could get input from the city, from people on the city, every one or two of them have an established board that, that once a month and things like that, so.
Okay.
I made a motion to eliminate.
Yeah.
I would second the motion.
Okay. And Cheryl? Aye.
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 Okay, perfect.
Well, that needs two readings since it's in the manual.
We'll have to have a next meeting, Bill draws up.
Yeah.
I think Dana should still be the.
I think so, too, the liaison.
Be a liaison.
At the last meeting, you charged me with keeping water out of the park. I have to say, I haven't done a very good job.
You've been a bit disappointed.
We're just going to keep giving you jobs, not one you can do.
One of the things, just to share with the group about, that I look back on, in the last seven years, the flood, the park has flooded from May to September five times, about seven years. And that's a change from when I first came here, almost 19 years ago, it wasn't flooding that much, so the changes in pool level and all of that and stuff, so it's happening more often, so that's why the new park is so important to us and enhancing it and helping it be a better park, and then when we can use Shadow Rock Park, have it there.
I think you have a great rapport with the community, so I think that's why, you know, with as far as the park liaison, you know, I think that's, I think you can probably bring what is.
I'll do my best.
Okay, perfect.
As the parks are, do you lean more toward Moses or Noah?
I have never parted water, though.
Well, there's a third option, but.
I do have stories about nature and Barbie Doregon and a few other things.
While we're still talking about that, Chris put together some numbers. Did you get a bid from lumberyard on the pavilion? Yes, and I just got today these preliminary figures, I still got to get two other lumber package bids, but 10-6 was the first, first 30 by 40 bid, 6 by 6, treated post metal trusses. I got my first concrete bid, and might be the only one because everybody's so busy. It's going to be in the neighborhood of $7,500 for 30 by 40 stamped stained concrete to match the two pavilions that we have there presently.
And if everybody doesn't know what we're discussing here, we would, part of the park upgrades that we're looking at, we need to be able to have family functions at the new park, and so in order to do that, we need a bigger pavilion, and we haven't yet had the time or the money at that, you know, to put that up during the pandemic, and so we're at that point now, we feel like we need to get that started and going, that's part of like with the sign, those are just upgrades that we're going to continue to make to that park so that it makes it more functional for our community, and so it is going to be a very nice pavilion, it looks.
Do you have a rough number on what that's going to run for the structure? Structure, 10,600 is the first bid, so after I get the other two bids, and if I can get any more concrete bids, I'd like to put that on the agenda. The city crew can get the pad ready, the gravel will get great shot, and we can help the concrete guy offset some of the cost a little bit.
How tall are the sidewalks or the posts as far as from the ground to the edge of the roof?
Nine foot is what we're looking at.
How long are the bids due for that we have?
Normally 30 days. And we've got the funds, we can do this, and we've got water in the park, so we need to do this.
Yes. It's happening so often this time of year.
Yeah.
When people will enjoy.
They want to have picnics and, yes.
And it's sad that it can't be in a location that overlooked the lake, but yeah, it is what it is. It'll be a good enhancement.
So once we get the, all the bids and we have our approval for that, how long do you anticipate the construction to take?
The concrete guy said he could get the, he could get it forward within two weeks, he has a two-week out schedule. The city crew is going to build the rest of the structure with our boom truck and our employees.
Since they're not having to mow and upkeep another park.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't call it free time, but.
It's not free time.
It's got more time.
But it is, yes.
Reallocated time, that's what it put.
Yep.
This pavilion be reservable?
Yes.
Do they know the charges on that?
We haven't gotten that far yet, but I don't imagine it'll be much different than what they are currently.
$20.
$20. Trying to make it, you know, affordable, but yet kind of hold somebody to, if they want to reserve it, that they aren't keeping somebody else out of it, so. Okay, number seven, discuss enhanced enterprise zone member appointments. Angela?
We are getting ready to have our annual enhanced enterprise zone meeting in June, and in looking over our appointments, the member that represents the special taxing districts is, her term is expiring, but she is also willing to continue in that role if you are so inclined. We do have a vacant seat, which is a member from the public that we will need to fill. For June, we'll have enough to make a quorum, but we do need someone to sit in that vacant seat for our next meeting. It's a once-a-year commitment, generally the meeting lasts 15 to 20 minutes, unless we were to have additional applications for abatements, and we'll probably meet on a little bit different schedule, but right now, we don't have anything to consider at this time.
Can we say the name or is it?
Yeah, we need to.
Debbie Redford is trustee for the health department, she's representing the three special taxing districts, central Tany County Fire, the health department, and the developmental board.
Okay. Make a motion to continue to point Debbie Redford?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, approval to write-off unpaid utility accounts in that amount of $11,649.09.
We have taken a payment on one of those today, the new balance is $11,574.92. This is the second half of what we started last meeting in cleaning up our delinquent accounts and moving towards a little more active collection process.
At the recommendation of the auditor?
Yes.
And after this, we'll be able to stay pretty current with our new procedure of not letting past dues go so long.
Yes, and Jack suggested that we do a mailing requesting information updates on our existing customers, which we'll probably roll out in phases so that we're not doing 1,200 of them in one week, and then annually, the board will review the delinquent accounts and decide which ones seem to be uncollectible, and we'll move forward annually to not let it build up like we have.
And turn what we can over to a collection agency?
Yes, yes.
And this is an accumulation of how many years since we?
10 years.
10 years worth of past due that we should have been charging off so much per year if they're uncollectible, so this is a catch-up thing. I'd make a motion, we approve $11,574.92 for utility write-off.
I would second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved promotion and wage increase for David Williams. Chris?
Recently, back, I believe it was in March, we lost an employee, maybe it's February, lost an employee after 15 years. Honestly, I think the park had a lot to do with it. He was a good guy, he was the outside lead, he, the only excuse was he just had enough. So I think there was a lot of factors in it. Regardless, we wished him, wished him well and wished him luck in the future. That being said, the guy outside, next corner line stepped up and asked to be appointed to it, put him on a 60-day probationary period, he's done a great job, stepped up, impressed me with the way he's handled situations, we've had several situations come up, since then, he's handled them quite well, so I recommend that we move him into this position of outside supervisor and to the wage that the former supervisor had. Pardon me, retroactively before the 30-day or the 60-day probationary period. Motion to approve David Williams' outside supervisor promotion and salary increase.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Tell them thank you for stepping up, appreciate, appreciate that.
Will. It's tough, isn't it?
I know, it's a lot of responsibility, so.
It is, more than people know.
Yep. Okay, approved firefighter applicant, Nate.
I'd like to introduce Mr. Brent Burnett.
Isn't that right?
He's a graduate from Forsyth High School, a little weird doing. He was one of our juniors back earlier in 2020, he had left, did life and orders and school and stuff, he's worked down at Canfield full-time and just came to us and request him to be a volunteer for us, so I'd like to recommend certification to be moved forward.
I love that, thank you. Appreciate that.
I move that we approve the new applicant.
I would second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, thank you for stepping up, I appreciate that.
At least you know what you're getting into.
Yeah.
One program.
And you're not new to the area, so you can deal with this, and that's a very good project.
All right, I have approved fire department residency application.
All right, I've got an update, I briefed a few of you on the fire crew depth, and unfortunately, it's been behind business this morning, so I'd like to pull that application honestly from residents. I would like, since it's on the agenda, if I could just discuss maybe, because currently it's $30 for the, a month, for the firefighter to stay there for their rent plus a $100 deposit. Part of their response, to kind of give you a briefing, part of their responsibility is 80 hours a month is what they're required to give to the city as far as volunteer time, taking care of the station, one, station two, and things like that, so there's some, you know, trade-offs there, but didn't know if that's something you guys want to adjust or leave it at $30, or adjust it as you guys need, I think back 10 years ago is when that was decided, so.
Does the city pay all utilities there and then they're just paying the $30 to stay there and the 80 hours?
Correct.
What are your feelings?
You know, obviously, it's not, you know, Hilton, you know, there is a lot of responsibilities for there, I, you know, I don't think it's out of mind to raise it some just to make sure that they know they have a commitment and it's not just a slack job, and obviously, we've filled through a vetting process and application process before we've been in there, and they have to be on the department at least a minimum year, so, you know, $50,000 is kind of what I would look at.
The 80 hours they work, is that logged in time?
It is, yeah, it's logged in, so we require each month to log that through. I used to, it was paper, now it's on our emergency reporting, so they actually log their station time as they put in.
And you check the condition of make sure they're doing the thing?
Right, yeah, as well as the station maintenance and cleaning, vacuuming, that sort of stuff. We haven't had anybody in there for five, six years, so it's been a while, but we do have a few interested firefighters, so if they're, if it's on there, we probably should at least, if you guys wanted to make any changes, now would be the time.
Well, they're committing to 80 hours a month, I don't, honestly, I don't think we ought to be charging more than $50, that's just my opinion.
$50, that's my thought.
Yeah, and so.
I think it's fair. I think it's fair.
I admit that we charge 50, raise that to $50 for rent for the vacancy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And I think your terminology of making sure they clean the dishes right after they eat is very good.
Yeah. All right, the minutes of April 19th, 2021 meeting.
I move the approval of the minutes of April 19th, 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Perfect. All right, bills for approval.
I move that we pay our approved bills, April the 22nd, $21,452.18. April the 29th, $1,909.19. May the 6th, $31,771.88. May the 13th, $147,123.94. And of that, $113,430 was the final payment that we had with our previous bond service for the water and sewer. And so that's, that was our final payment to them.
Perfect.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, financial statements as of April 30th, 2021.
You have your comparative of your cash balances between this year and last year. We are improving our cash position a bit, primarily in the restricted funds, which is fine. We have a use for those funds. Your budget is looking pretty healthy. We are conservative on expenditures and we are collecting our revenues as, as we would expect to, given calendar year timing. But with that said, it is time to begin the next year's budgeting process. So in June, I'll be getting from the department heads their requests for what they, what programs they want to continue and things they need to buy, and then I'll be putting that together for you in June for sure to be before you in July. And if you want to have a separate budget session, we can do that as well, but it'll take me all of June to put it, stick it all in a shaker and shake it up.
With the way things look, this, and with the revenue that we have and, and is, do you think it will be possible that we could possibly fit the body cameras in for those police officers this coming, upcoming year?
Yes.
Okay.
And if you wish to include in car cameras, it might be the time to do that as well.
Yeah. With things going the way they've been going lately, I'm just more and more increase, I, I think the need is there. So that's something we seriously need to look at.
Yeah, the one thing.
I mean, we've talked about it in the last year and stuff, but it's, things are kind of really going a little bit.
The one thing I will need is a real number.
Okay.
A real ballpark number, and then this would probably be the year that we might add or rotate out a patrol car. So that's quite a load on the budget.
I know.
For one department.
Right.
So with some numbers, we can figure out what that's going to look like, but.
Okay, I just wanted the alderman to be aware that that I am really pushing for those cameras because of just the increase of, of incidents that are happening with our, you know, with the public and so not with between our officers, it's just things that are happening. And so just to protect everyone. And so that's, I think it's a tremendous need at this point.
Well, unfortunately, we're seeing things happen that two years ago we wouldn't have believed were happening even in our community.
Yeah. And it's everywhere. So anyway, I just want to make sure our officers know that, you know, that they're, we are, we're behind them and that, you know, it's something that incident that happens, there's proof somewhere along the line, so anyway. So, all right. Approval of transfers from April 20, oh, did I miss one? Oh, no, we didn't do a, didn't do a motion for the financial statements. Sorry, I got to talking. Didn't do that.
I move that we approve the financial statements.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No, no, it's me talking. Yeah. Thank you for keeping me on. All right, and approval of transfers from April 22nd, 2012 through May 12th, 13th, 2021. How does that?
Those are 21s.
Okay, so it's been 21s.
I'm in 2020.
I was going to say, all right.
Well, that's, that's pretty low transfers.
Yeah.
It's a long time.
Approved those transfers.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. So you do make mistakes.
Yes, I do.
All right, does anybody have anything they'd like to add?
I do. I need to ask a couple of questions just to be, to, to clarify. When you guys have first and second readings, does that approve the bill from that point on or is that, I'm not for sure exactly how the reading works.
Yes, they do. That's, that's the second, second reading is to enact.
So the first reading is to advise people, the second reading is to enact it. So there's no transition between the first and the second. So, okay. And so the, the unpaid utilities that were written off from last month, is that the same utilities as another additional $11,000 from the month before your fourth, because we only have $31,000 in written off utility bills?
In 10 years.
In 10 years. Well, this is fine, but why didn't you guys do it all together?
Because I had to make a list of them individually and make sure that they were valid bills. We couldn't just give them one single report and say, go for it.
Okay.
Quite a few accounts.
It was, if you see the list, there's a lot of it. And so, I mean, because you're talking, some of them are $50, some of them are $900. So, you know, there's a whole lot of gap in between of, of the amounts and so that's ended up being a lot of different accounts.
Sure. I just was curious why you guys did it in two different segments.
And to address your question on first and second readings, typically, we do not like to do first and second readings in one meeting. We normally like to have them over two different meeting periods of time, but there are times such as with this bond revenue issue, that it's pertinent that we have to do it in one reading. And because of the time involved in putting everything together and the coordination of it, it's not possible to spread it out over two meetings.
So when, I think it was the March meeting, is that when the campground, the campground reading bill took place?
Campground reading. RV meeting?
The RV, yeah.
The RVs on city property reading, was that the one?
Yes.
That one was because it was actually scheduled for, one for February and one for March. We could not have the February meeting, so we were trying to take what we had in February to condense it to the March, all of it together.
Sure. Before the meeting, I had actually contacted three of the council, not, I mean, I contacted you. You told me to contact Chris. Chris wouldn't talk to me.
When did you try to contact me?
I tried to contact you on a weekday because I was told not to contact you on a Saturday and you said we were having an ice storm.
Show me that. Show me where you contacted, you haven't tried to contact me in weeks, Becky, weeks.
Christopher?
No.
Okay, so let's move on. Move on.
You just want attention.
So what, what then, who did you contact after?
I didn't, I actually went into Mr. McCullough at the, at the post office the day after the meeting and I said, you know, I wasn't able to go because there was, there was an ice storm and he told me that I need to go find out from somebody else that he didn't have time for it. So I just walked away. So I'm kind of disappointed.
So what, what is it in there that you're disappointed with?
I'm disappointed because I actually had been looking at a piece of property, put a camera on him and I came to Larry Reynolds and I had asked for the ordinances and he gave me a list of the ordinances and from the next thing I know, they're making different ordinances. And I asked if this was going to, is this triggered your memory? I said, is this going to affect the project that I'm doing in town?
And I told you no.
Didn't we already have, it wasn't, didn't we already have the ordinance? It's just a, it was just a few words altered, didn't it?
They couldn't live in it at their, it was a use.
I completely didn't agree with the ordinance that was made, but when I asked specifically about what the ordinances is and then I'm told that, you know what, you don't have time for me and then I asked you specifically if it had anything to do with me and you said I didn't contact you about it when I did contact you about it, then I asked you. Yeah. And then you just now got through saying that it didn't.
How long ago was that? And why is this an issue tonight?
Why is it an issue tonight? Because I have actually tried two different times to have a special meeting between Forrest, you and somebody else.
This is the problem, Becky, you're getting too many things mixed up with city business. You're getting personal business, city business, your business, things that's happened at your business, accusations, all of this wrapped up into a point where city employees can't take your phone calls, are blocking you because of how you're acting, okay?
Sir, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you right now that I have asked on several different occasions, Mr. Forrest, do you want to stand in front of the camera with this work?
Okay, where can, wait, this is getting to be where it's, you're involving our employees and you can't do that in a public meeting. You can't do that in a public meeting.
I try to get it on the agenda and I've tried to.
Even then, you can't do that in a public meeting, just so you know. And so you can't discuss employees in a public meeting.
So next time I'll be on the agenda and then I'll be able to say my piece.
You won't be able to talk about an employee, though.
Personnel is off limits.
It is.
Period.
It should be addressed by the people.
Isn't there a way to have a closed session to talk about an employee issue?
Amongst them.
Among staff.
Not the general public.
I understand that, but wouldn't you want to have information in a closed session meeting from the person with the complaint? Otherwise, there's no transparency. That makes no sense.
They've, they've been given a lot of information about several different things. So I know you're sitting out there judging from.
I'm not judging. I'm not informed, but they have had a lot than I have. I'm not judging, I'm just looking at it from other public bodies. My, my experience is education, so I mean, I know it's not exactly the same. I'm just saying at some point, don't you guys want transparency somewhere in there? It's almost, and, and Chris, we're friends. I have nothing against you.
But why do you want to be transparent? That's, I, I just want you to, I want to know what you want to be transparent.
I don't want anything to be transparent. I'm asking a question because it sounds to me like you guys are saying, you can't complain about employees, that's off the table. Well, that's the point.
You don't know the whole story.
I don't want the whole story. I'm asking how that works.
Don't ask us to change if you don't have the whole story.
You can bring in a complaint to, you can send a complaint to me and then I can discuss that with the alderman in a closed session meeting.
Okay, that's what I was asking is what's the procedure?
But you can't bring in an open, openly complaint so that it's on camera, everybody hears it and.
Totally understand. That was not what I was asking. My understanding from the answer you were giving was, there's no way to do it and I was trying to clarify for the people who didn't understand that there's got to be a way to do it. And with all due respect to Chris, I wasn't trying to attack him, we've been friends for 40 years.
Yeah.
I just, I didn't think he was hearing me all the way through what I was trying to ask before he was answering it. And that's all I was saying was, there's got to be a procedure.
No, there is.
But does everybody know the procedure? Do we publish that so people know?
It is, actually, it's in the sunshine law.
I was going to say.
Well, that's what I was thinking. They said, doesn't the city work under the sunshine law like pretty much every other political body in the state?
So who do you, who do you contact? Because I, I contacted three people at one time about having a private closed session meeting before I brought it publicly and I was ignored.
I haven't got anything from you.
Right, I didn't contact you, Kelly, because I didn't know to contact.
You need to contact me.
Okay.
And you need to either send me a letter or an email and I address it from there.
Okay.
And they all know, and I have a mayor email, it's Forsyth MoMayor@gmail.com.
Okay.
So if you send me an email, I can address it from there and talk to Chris and if he feels like we need to have, talk more with the, with the alderman, then that's what we do.
And I have absolutely, that's the utmost respect.
Yeah.
That's the way I'm supposed to be talked to.
Yeah.
What he just said to me in public was no different than me addressing him as a person that I'm paying a salary.
Okay.
So that's, that's the difference.
So please direct those to me.
Sure.
And, and then we'll, I'll go from there, okay?
Sure.
And that way we eliminate any hearsay type of thing going on. He said, she said, all those type of things. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And if we have it in writing, then it's a lot easier to, to deal with, okay? All right, perfect. Anybody else have anything? All right.
I hope everyone has a very good Memorial Day weekend, a very safe Memorial Day weekend. And I would know that we adjourned and possibly else has something.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Perfect, thank you.